Lord Provost, item 8C is a motion by councillor Lana Reid-McConnel.
Thank you. Glasgow has various amazing examples of street art and graffiti. It's something that draws people to our city and something that makes people's journey around the city that wee bit brighter. In Whiteinto, my ward, Victoria Park, there's a cafe called Hayling Canteen on Dunbarth Road. Just on the sides of it, there's a wall that the cafe owner has chosen to provide to the social enterprise, enabling street art and graffiti colourways. Since then, the wall has seen a few different transformations by different artists who are able to express themselves with whatever piece of street art they feel they choose or feel fits for that wall. I know from speaking to residents and those who've passed the area that it helps bring a bit of colour and excitement. Street art and graffiti are powerful tools for social change. On that point, we know the importance of artists in campaigns for change. We see this in campaigns from groups such as Living Rent, Enough is Enough, Don't Pay UK, Stop Campbell and Power to the People Glasgow. By enabling more street art around the city, we can help inspire a future generation of artists, while also bringing new life to forgotten or underused parts of the city. Something that Colourways and other artists and organisations such as SWG3 have called for over the years is legal public walls in the city. Both officers and councillors have been involved over the years in work around graffiti and street art. However, there's clearly more we can do when it comes to celebrating and harnessing the culture. During the summer, I went to Panda from Colourways exhibition, which had a series titled Council Grey, symbolic of the nature of the council's fast movement to cover up any graffiti and street art with grey paint that's reported to be illegal across the city. Of course, any offensive or discriminatory graffiti should be removed immediately. However, Glasgow's reported spend on graffiti removal, as identified by a Freedom of Information request in 2019, showed it to be the highest out of 127 councils that responded, a more than double. The second highest spender, Hackney Council, at about £650,000 just that year. The reported cost of 39 murals around the city from 2008 to 2019 was only about £150,000. By identifying more legal walls, we could help reduce the spend by making legal graffiti a greater part of the culture. Understandably, this could be a difficult task for officers to roll out in all areas of the city, which is why we highlight the potential for approaching this through individual area partnerships. This could be a good forum for engaging local groups, community councils, housing associations or community centres and partnering together to eventually provide legal walls in every ward. We hope to work towards a structure that allows for easy identification of public walls and therefore involvement of many different constituents across Glasgow, Glasgow who may otherwise typically be excluded from the culture, creating diversity in the art we see across our city. We want to support residents to feel empowered and getting creative in their streets, having the space to practise without so many barriers, making it safer and easier. There is many great examples of the use of public legal walls. One not so far away in Edinburgh, there's even graffiti parks in places such as Barcelona, Berlin and Leicester. It's been suggested by officers that we could even construct walls for this specific purpose in existing parks. So with this motion, we ask that council celebrates what street art and graffiti have brought to our city. We ask that council officers continue their work on this topic and support the exploration of rolling out a citywide pilot that engages local artists and community groups. I also thank the SNP for bringing their amendment. It strengthens the motion and highlights important examples of ongoing work. By bringing this motion today, we hope to bring more visibility to the need for legal public walls, shift the narrative around graffiti and help create a city where many forms of street art are supported, embraced and celebrated. Thank you.
And to second the Green motion is Bailey Christie-Mearns.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Before I start, I'd like to express my sincere condolences to everybody from the Labour group for the untimely loss of a good man, Bailey Malcolm-Cunning. The feeling of sadness is very clear and palpable and I very much know why. He was a wonderful, kind man and he will be sadly missed. We spend a huge amount of effort and money responding to problem graffiti, as we all probably know. Because it's a priority for people, it's constant and poor graffiti is known to make neighbourhoods feel run down and communities unsafe. But those that engage in it can lack the services and opportunities that they need too. We also have a wealth of talent and creativity in our city, eminent and emerging artists, handfuls of important galleries and museums and a history of artistic achievement. A walk around the city centre has been made much more enjoyable for many as a result of large-scale murals commissioned by Glasgow City Council as part of the city centre mural trail. And new murals have been popping up all around our communities, further afield too, bringing colour, joy and opportunity to many more still, such as SWG3's work, which has transformed the railway arches, for example, along the Clyde side, showing local artists and promoting positive messages. There are clearly positive things happening already in our city on this. But we can do more to make projects like this a bigger part of the solution. Because the current approach, despite the hard work of council departments and clean-up teams, cannot keep up. I'm sure many of our inboxes are testament to this. The often daily complaints that we receive from residents who are fed up and angry and powerless to fix it. Tags are appearing faster than they can be removed. Residents don't have capacity to keep on top of the reporting themselves and the reporting processes are often inaccessible from the start. At times even more frustratingly, quality artworks have been removed when they've been reported, when we could have had an assessment framework in place to prevent this from happening. SWG3 and others have been calling for legal walls for many years and many of you here have probably also played a part in promoting street art or bringing new sites forward, including myself from Europroject during COP26. But if we can formalise this just a bit better, make the processes more open and collaborative and allow our communities to have a bigger role in deciding how to take these projects forward, we could have even greater results. This is why one of our suggestions in this motion is that area partnerships could play a positive role here. So we should explore this, to allow communities and organisations to bring forward their proposals and decide where the priorities should be. They are perhaps best placed to decide this, to help in the evaluation even and to foster greater community buy-in and stewardship of sites. We also think it's important that a report is brought, which... Oh, sorry, I'm taking privileges here. So yeah, we would like to see a little bit more in work in this and please support the motion.
We have an SNP amendment by councillor Rudi Kelly.
Thank you very much, Lord Provost, and thank you to the mover and secondor of the motion. Glasgow has a vibrant youth culture. It was one of the reasons why I moved to Glasgow over 10 years ago now, so not involved in the youth culture anymore. But I do remember going to graffiti nights in Flat 1 on Bath Street, whenever they would mix that sort of street culture with the music. And it shows that that counterculture has been part of the mainstream essentially in Glasgow for such a long period of time. And I think it's time that our policy sort of moves with that. There's... Nobody's talking about conflating vandalism and antisocial behaviour with good street art. And it's just about finding the right places for that to take place, for safe spaces for artists to showcase their work and encouraging the skill and talent that there is in the city to be displayed in places where they'll be visible to the people who live there and can form part of the likes of the mural trail, which has been so successful in terms of bringing people to the city and showcasing the talent that's on display here. I mean, there's been a lot of partnership working already going on. The likes of Yardworks, which was spoken about there at SWG3, founded in 2016. It's been instrumental in an explosion of Glasgow's street art scene. And recently, it has been part of creating murals and artwork at a lot of what would have been run-down, derelict sites in the city and really transforming them into community spaces. And the idea of this is to progress that and to allow more of that to take place in the city and involving our young people who quite often maybe want to get involved in that. But if we can direct it away from writing their name on the goma to actually producing works of art in the city, I think that would be a worthwhile direction of their talents and skills. As I say, providing the likes of the legal walls would provide a safe place for this art to be carried out. Quite often, dangerous places are gotten into and assessed by people who are carrying out this art, often at their own risk. And we would want to be avoiding that wherever possible, you know, the likes of access and railway bridges and things like that. If we can provide a safe space for people to carry this out, then we may be avoiding any potential injuries to our young people. So as I say, we're wanting to support these artists, find places where it can be carried out and change that sort of chase in our tail approach that maybe there's been in the past. While it would obviously be supporting the removal of any offensive graffiti and vandalism, we do spend a lot of money covering up actual works of art. So if you look at the likes of the Brumilaw and places like that where there has been continuous covering up, that's a policy that we have had in the council going back god knows how long. But I think it's something that we need to address now and change if we're to bring that side and the culture and art into the offering that the city has.
To second the SNP amendment, Bailey Annette Christie.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Art is a powerful way to engage with and empower communities, introduce them to social issues, inspire them to take action in order to make the world a better place. Now, that's a direct quote from a report on Create for Glasgow. And as councillors will know, this was a creative participatory project designed with and for young people, delivered in partnership with Glasgow's education team and Glasgow Life's Connecting Communities programme. We must nurture the creative talent of our young people. But colleagues, art can exist and be exhibited anywhere. A wall is just a blank canvas. And in our city that is famed for the artistic expression of putting a traffic cone on a statue, we must continue to develop the talents of our disenfranchised street artists. And as Banksy said, graffiti is one of the few tools you have if you've almost nothing. Both street art and graffiti art are an important part of the identity of cities across the globe and they're linked to placemaking policies. But whether you think graffiti is a subversive democratic art form or vandalism and a public nuisance, its roots date back to the caveman days where markings and figures were scratched on stone. They marked an existence, creating a tag to say to the world, I was here, my life matters. Graffiti art is raw art, perhaps the purest art form around. And since 2017, when the Yardworks Festival was established, the SNP City Government has seized the opportunity to work with great graffiti artists, seeing the potential to build on our reputation as one of the world's foremost cities for contemporary art. £700,000 in total has been secured from the Scottish Government Regeneration Capital Grant Fund for SWG3 Yardworks Steel Arts Hub. That's the first of its kind in the UK. This studio will offer a purpose-built home for street arts, providing space for hundreds of artists to create, as well as using the art form to support social change through Yardworks' community work, in addition to supporting creative industry career pathways and nourishing skills in those further removed from the job market. The project will provide leadership for our communities to revitalise neighbourhoods across the city. And as Glasgow Life's Chair, I should and do take pride in all the creative talent the city has to offer. And this summer, I visited the Glue Factory exhibition in the Canal Ward showcasing street art culture. Storytellers was a 75 artist-strong mixed media show that featured big names from Glasgow's street art scene, including Priest, Mark Wors, Roberto, Chelsea Frew and Panda amongst others. And I'm in complete agreement with what Panda has said. Youth work definitely aligns with the idea of helping people express themselves. If you nurture the young person, then they eventually will become the next person that's going to lead the way. That's inspiring, colleagues. Please support the SNP amendment and let's continue to celebrate street artists and their contribution.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you.
We're now going to open the floor for discussion. And first up is Laura Doherty.
Thank you, Lord Provost. I can thank the Green group for bringing this motion to full council today. Colleagues, Glasgow is an artistic city. Art has been a fundamental part of our civic identity since our earliest days as a cathedral city. High-quality public art across Glasgow has helped generate a sense of civic pride, tell the stories of our communities and fundamentally enhance the city for visitors and residents alike. We host a large collection of contemporary and historic art in the public realm, which contributes to our unique and distinctive streetscape, bringing economic, cultural and educational benefits to our communities. As colleagues will know, during the 2020 summer lockdown, a mural trail featuring creative and diverse artwork was created across the city centre, linking up some of the highlights from the street art culture. Other highlights include the Glasgow International, one of the largest international contemporary art festivals in the UK, and is committed to encouraging Glasgow residents to rediscover the city through commissioned artworks and projects. As my colleague councillor Kelly and Bailey Annette Christie have mentioned, since 2017, the Yardworks Festival has grown to become one of the key fixtures in the worldwide street art scene, attracting more visitors from around the world. In 2018, more than 1,000 metres of wall space was transformed into live canvas by visiting artists over a weekend in May. The centrepiece of the weekend's event was the creation of a large-scale mural by world-renowned Spanish street art duo Pichiavol. This year, the festival boasted a strong presence from women artists, including Chelsea Frew, 29, an illustrator and founding member of the female-led mural team Cobalt Collective, who have painted the last four festivals. Colleagues, I would encourage you all to get out and see what our city has to offer. Join the thousands of people watching paint dry. Many of us already admire the nearby images based on St Mungo and his robin and St Enix feeding the infant mungo. We also have terrific murals of Billy Connolly from artists such as Rachel McLean and our public collection only continues to grow. We have a thriving creative and cultural agitators and artists in our city and that visitors from around the world celebrate and we should be incredibly proud of the development of the creative sector in this city. I'd ask members to support the motion as amended by the SNP. Thank you.
We now have councillor Gavanagh.
Thank you. I wasn't going to speak on this motion, but I see my board colleagues over there and they're looking, we're both looking at each other, right? We would welcome in the Caddonald Ward the beautiful murals in the city centre. We've tried for five years to get something in my ward. Art is beautiful. It promotes the city in a positive manner. Gang tags we remove, sexual graffiti we remove, religious graffiti we remove. But I would like to ask you, come to our ward, bring the beautiful artists from wherever they come from, visit the Caddonald Ward and enhance the Caddonald Ward. I fully support this. Glasgow needs to thrive through it. It's a fantastic thing and the murals in the city centre are absolutely beautiful. But I'm going to be greedy, I would like them in my ward. And I'm sure the local councillors would actually support that. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor. Up next is councillor Dan Hutcheson.
Thank you, Lord Provost. And thank you to councillor Reid-McConnel and deputy Lord Provost for bringing this motion to the chamber. I'm lucky enough to represent the Govern ward and I'm sure my ward colleagues here will agree that the recent street art installations at Lisbeth Street Garden and next to Riverside Hall are a really welcome addition to the area. They reflect our communities in unique and colourful ways. Our new murals are the start of a new mural trail around the Greater Govern area. And it's fantastic to see these bursts of colours reflect the history and culture of our communities as we turn the corners of our streets. This motion sets out how we can, as a local authority, develop street art. And as a city as creative and artistic as this, we have the potential to hit the world stage with our murals. I particularly welcome the potential of the area partnerships playing active roles in increasing our street art. I know that my area partnership in particular would be delighted to participate in this pilot. So please, I endorse you to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is councillor Alan Casey.
Thanks, Lord Provost. And first of all, I just wish to pay my respects to Bailey Malcolm-Cunning as well and offer my condolences to everybody who loved him. Thank you, Lord Provost, for allowing me to speak on this motion and I'm very pleased to see this discussion here today. And thanks to councillor Reid-McConnel for bringing it. This is something I know that a number of my colleagues have been working on for some time and I think this gives us a great opportunity to highlight a lot of the progress that we are making in the city in terms of the promotion of the city's graffiti and street art culture, which is thriving and has been for many years. However, despite this thriving culture, I don't think we can escape the fact that we do have a real problem with antisocial graffiti in the city. Many could argue, however, that the lack of safe space and the stigmatisation of the street art culture could be compounding the problem of the antisocial aspects of it. Every year, the council weighs significant sums of cash in power washing or grey washing various spaces across the city. And in many locations, the council's paint would be barely dry before another piece of graffiti is placed over the top of it. I think there really does need to be a joined-up approach to strategies around reducing antisocial graffiti, especially the unsafe practice that does endanger lives. I've been delighted to work with local community organisations in my ward alongside SWG3 and Yardworks to look at potential spaces in Deniston Ward, which would really benefit from having legal walls designated. Through discussions, I know that they are really keen to be involved in citywide approaches that forefront the knowledge, the experience and passion of the street artists themselves, as their understanding of the graffiti community is invaluable. I would really like to see the likes of the city centre mural trail expand outside the city itself and showcase lots of different artists and different types of graffiti across all of our communities, something like what councillor Gavanagh has said there. I really hope we can embrace this culture and really change the way in which we deal with street art, which allows us to divert people away from the antisocial elements of it. I believe Glasgow could become one of the best cities in the world for street artists, like Berlin, Miami, Melbourne etc. This will attract visitors, generate footfall, instill local pride, improve the environment and foster stronger collaborations across our communities. I hope that you can support the SNP amendment. Thanks.
Up next is Bailey Eileen Gallagher.
Thank you, Lord Provost. Like my colleague councillor Gavanagh, I also have a wall that would be a candidate. My colleagues may recall the controversy about somebody building a duket in Oatlands on unused council land. This also is Glasgow history and Glasgow practice. People using not exactly legal practices, people liberating materials that are to hand, taking spaces that is not used, building pigeon lofts and having rivalries between them, between each other to get better ones. This particular instance, the builder of the duket went to great lengths to actually beautify the place and made a very, very pleasant place for people to actually use in the local area. Now, by this duket, there is a wall covered in tags. And this also would be a great place for local people to beautify the area, to express their creativity and to enhance the space. And also, it would be more inclusive because the taggers, the graffiti artists, they might not particularly be interested in the legacy of dukets, but they can build their own legacy. So I would like very much for legal graffiti walls to include these spaces and any other ones that are appropriate. Thanks very much.
Councillor Matt Care.
Thank you. I just wanted to rise in support of the motion. I think it's a very good one indeed. My partner is a struggling artist. She didn't tell me about the struggling part until we got married, unfortunately, but we... But anyway, no, we actually lived over in New York a million years ago now and she had a studio in a place called Five Points in Court Square, Long Island site. And it was an old propeller factory and it was just being sort of taken over. And what they did there, the Five Points, kind of cooperative, I guess, what they would do is they would arrange for parcels of the walls of the building, it's massive, massive building, bigger than the one we're standing on, hugely. They'd be parcelled up and you could go on their webpage and book that little bit. And somebody would go and the deal was, you would go on there, do whatever you like, nobody else would touch it for a month, that was yours. And the result was, the building was absolutely amazing. It went from being a blight in that neighbourhood into an absolute beacon. It was fantastic. Unfortunately, it's no longer with us just due to the behaviour of some pretty shady developers in the area, but that's another story. But the principle was very, very good indeed. And there was actually people used to come from all over, not just New York, but all over the world. If they were visiting there, they would come there and they would try their luck on this building. I think mark-making is absolutely fundamental, fundamental even, to what it is to be human. It's what we all do. It's one of the very first things we do when we're little. And you know, if we're lucky enough, we still have the confidence to do it when we're big. And I think it's really important that we do everything we can to instill confidence in people in the city. But more than that, to democratise public space. Because we look around and sadly, so much of our space is grey and dull. And if people felt they had some sense of ownership of it, they could make it brighter for us all. But it reflects, it rolls into other aspects of our city life. So that democratisation of public space, about regaining the geographies of our city in favour of the citizenry rather than private profit, I think would be a delight to behold. So all power to your elbow with this motion. I fully support.
Next, councillor Alex Wilson.
Thank you very much, Lord Provost. I wasn't going to speak on this motion either, but Bailey Gavanagh has kind of prompted me. First of all, I'd like to send my condolences to the Labour group as well. Malcolm was a fine man and I'm sure he'll be missed across the chamber. And also thank you to the Green group for bringing this motion to the chamber as well today. Bailey Gavanagh touched on, he would like more graffiti-slope murals in the Caddonald Ward. I'm going to pay tribute to a man who used to be in the Caddonald Ward and used to dawn these chambers and that was the late Alistair Watson. Alistair was a stalwart of our community and he listened to the public. We had a wall within Paisley Road West, which was always being covered in graffiti. It was a blank wall, blank canvas, always covered in graffiti. So Alistair had it in his head to visit the local schools and he set up a mural committee where they designed a mural and we had that put on our wall. Now, that was a good number of years ago and not once has ever been any graffiti put on that or has it been defaced. And that just shows you the power that a mural can have within a community, that people are not willing to touch it. And for me, I think that is fundamentally what we should be doing here and I would equate councillor Gavanagh as well in saying that, yes, we would like more murals in our area. To the extent, all four ward councillors are going to meet with a local organisation and we may well find that that may be the case going forward. But I'd just like to thank the Greens again, so thank you.
We now move to the last speaker in this debate and that's councillor Graham Campbell.
Thank you, Lord Provost, and I rise to support this motion. But before I do, I will add my words of condolence and also commiseration with our Labour colleagues at the loss of Bailey Malcolm-Cunning. My last conversation with him was after our meeting in April, where we had just passed the motion around recognising our slavery legacy and forming an apology to the African Caribbean communities for the slavery legacy. And I certainly appreciated his support for that policy and certainly his support for the work of the Slavery Legacy Working Group that's ongoing. And I thank him for it. He was very generous and a great partisan of looking into the real history of this city and this country. And he was very knowledgeable about it. Somebody, it's very rare you speak to people and they've read all the history books that you've read and more. And certainly, he was very well informed on the question of the slavery legacy. So I pay my respects to him. So I pay my respects to him. I'm going to say this about this. I also wasn't planning to speak on this, but I think it's important to back up my colleagues in Cardonald Ward and say that, and also to recognise the comments that councillor Doherty made about how well the Glasgow International worked for us in my ward in Springburn. We actually got local artists and the local community working together to use art and the international art community coming to visit the city as a way to regenerate our own heritage, our own art and our own community and bring back to use a community venue, the old town, old library in Springburn. I can very recommend the experience. It was very, very useful for us as a community and I certainly would support murals, public spaces, anything, the way we use art as a way to regenerate the community and to create those conversations about the meaning of art in public life. Very important. I've reached my hands across the river in support of your efforts in Cardonald to get Glasgow International into your area and into every area across the city.
Councillor Reed McConnell, we will now move to summing up. Can you indicate in your summing up if you agree with the SNP amendment? Yes, you do.
Thanks, Lord Provost, and thanks everyone who's made a contribution to the conversation today. Everyone's brought a beautiful story or, you know, a great idea that could really help us transform street art and graffiti in this city. You know, I'd like to say I do support the SNP amendment and I'm looking forward to working across the chamber. Can't wait to see what happens in Cardonald. And yeah, thank you, everyone.